No, I can see it on my side.
Are you ready?
Yeah.
Okay. Good evening, City Council members and community members. My name is Doris Flynn. I live in the Villa Monterey tract that's directly behind here. I've lived here 55 years. We moved here in 1969. We're original owners. I'm probably one of the oldest people in this room. I've seen this area go from our tract in the Meadows tract across the street to a sprawling city with a vital downtown that consists of the civic center and all of the other exciting things that the City Council has approved for us to do. When I moved here, I only had a stroller. My husband took the car every day, so I had to find things to do for my children. I immediately looked at the community center and they had tons of things for the kids to do. So every day, I would load them up and we would either go to the community center for classes or the library for our story time. And it was wonderful. I loved it. There was a farm at the end of our street. It was very rural and nice. I loved every second of living here, and I still do. When my children went to school, we went to Cox and Masuda. And at Masuda, I became active in the government there. And we participated in many fundraisers at the community center. We had art auctions. We had fundraisers. We had Monte Carlo night. Anytime we wanted to do anything, it was available. I've also worked for elections there. We set up our elections and everybody came and voted and we got to see all the people in the neighborhood. It was wonderful. I've attended wedding receptions there. There's also a fountain out in front of the community center. I don't know if most of the people know that. One time, the City Council decided it wasn't very good. It needed to be repaired, so they just filled it up with dirt and planted flowers in it. But it's still there. And I mention these activities of the past because I would like to advocate for the refurbishment of the community center and the preschool. It might be expensive, but it's what we need in this area zone for public buildings. Our community center could be used for activities again. After the Boys and Girls Club leave, if they don't want to stay, we could start having our activities again. I may not be here, but there'll be lots and lots of people to take my place. I don't want a hotel. It would bring strangers and traffic and loss of library parking. I don't want more townhouses, even though there's lots of wonderful people that live there. It's overkill for our area. The traffic is ridiculous, like everyone has said. And the parking is gone again. And we're going to have a loss of our public area. We need our public area.
Doris, your time is up.
Okay.
Russell Hewie.
Hello, council members. My name's Russell. Been a resident here for about 10 years now. I'd originally prepared some remarks after watching the recording of the last study session. I walked away with that with some concerns. My concern primarily being the revenue focus of the four options being presented. There was little mention of how the options impacted the families and community who rely on this site, nor was there mention of how the revenue generated would directly benefit the residents. But I'm glad to see today that there's a little bit more information being shared. And the language at option four had shifted a bit to indicate a more willingness to engage the community on opportunities for the site. So with that, I mean, I think I would just want to emphasize that we should evaluate this property, not just from the lens of revenue generation. Because revenue generation and developing something for the community that benefits the community doesn't have to be mutually exclusive. So as others here have said, let's use this as an opportunity to make Fountain Valley truly a place to live, learn, work, and grow. Thank you.
Angela Hewie. Angela Hewie.
Mr. Miller, can you pass this out to the council members? Thank you. Good evening, City Council members. My name is Angela, and I'm a resident of Fountain Valley, and my child attends the daycare. I'm speaking today to express my concern with the lack of collaboration and partnership between residents and the city in what we should do with our civic center. Our civic center should remain a community-centered space that prioritizes the needs of our residents. And transforming this area into a hotel, which caters primarily to outside visitors, shifts the focus away from serving the local community. And I want to thank Art for providing additional context and details of the plans for their preschool because you know I've been contacting our director constantly for updates when we first heard about this. And I think after hearing what I've heard today, what worries me is the absence of a clear plan for relocating this essential service, which raises significant concerns about the well-being of the children and the families like mine who rely on it. And so what you have in front of you is a table that I've prepared with all of the non-denominational daycares in and near Fountain Valley. And as you can see, the Learning Center, Boys and Girls Club, is the most cost-effective and offers the most options for families. And we should work on keeping the daycare here in Fountain Valley. And it's also important that we address the current state of disrepair of the buildings. It appears that the city has allowed this facility to deteriorate without taking adequate steps to maintain or upgrade it. This neglect has led to its current condition, which should not be used as a justification for replacing it with something like a hotel that just brings in strangers. Instead, we should focus on improving the facility, enhancing vital community resources like the daycare. So I urge you to ask the city staffers to explore other options. Conduct surveys. Host community workshops with us. Host forums to really find out what the residents want and need. I mean, we've got a ton of people out here. I'm sure we all would want to come to a workshop. So let's be partners in this together. We need to prioritize the preservation of the community's resources. And again, I want to thank you for your attention on this matter. And I hope you really are able to listen to what we're asking you to do today. Thanks.
Stephanie Monson.
Hello, my name is Stephanie Monson, and my family and I have lived in our home on Los Alamos for the last 10 years. I was born and raised in the Midwest, but married a lifelong resident and product of Fountain Valley Public Schools. My children attend school at Cox Elementary and Masuda Middle School. I am here to express my disappointment and disapproval in the proposal to replace the civic buildings that currently house Boys and Girls Club and the childcare center with a hotel or apartment complex. Fountain Valley has been known for its family friendliness, yet this potential next step for the two buildings are the polar opposite of something that would benefit our local families and may in fact push more families out of our city into neighboring cities or even out of state. Nationally and even in our beautiful city, there is a childcare crisis. Working moms are often spending close to, if not all, their income on childcare. Closing the Boys and Girls Club location and the childcare center will only exasperate the problem. Closing a daycare that has an eight-plus-month waiting list that is deemed reasonably priced and one of the only non-denominational facilities in town only serves to push families out of our area, which does hurt all of us. It doesn't seem to adhere to the city's stated core values. Instead, it diminishes the quality of life for our families with children who rely on both facilities. The ripple effects are notable. Less families means less kids, which means more closed public schools and perhaps many of our senior-age residents without family nearby to assist them as they age. I think we can acknowledge the need for revenue for our city. I believe there are many options to increase the city's revenue production in those buildings and that a hotel or apartment complex are extremely short-sighted and good for making money, but not good for the community as a whole. I believe making the repairs to the buildings and maintaining their use as community centers using creativity and innovation to make additional revenue opportunities is best for the city and its residents. Thank you.
Mr. Acosta.
Good evening, council, and thank you for allowing me to speak. I just want to touch on a couple of things on a presentation that I saw. Really, we only saw two options. One, to sell or not sell. And of the options to sell, none of them have the benefit of the community. The presentation lacked clarity, objectivity, and creativity for alternate uses of the land. If you choose to approve the hotel, there's a lot of environmental issues to go along with that. Increase energy, water, material waste, gluten bio and material waste, parking, foot traffic, crime. And the city services, I don't think have accounted for or monetarily the impact of that. And so the impact of the monetary, impact of the environmental will greatly exceed the estimated repairs in the long term for this building. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Nikki Nguyen.
Hello, my name is Nikki Nguyen, and I am a resident of Fountain Valley for 10 years, and I live across the hall. So I am here to strongly oppose the idea of a hotel or an apartment for many, many reasons. This is a community place for all residents. It's not for City Council to make light decisions on selling because once you sell, you can't buy back. It's a place for kids to learn and to play together. My son, he makes some friends with kids who came over here for karate and dancing classes. Okay? It is also, it's safer for the community to not have a hotel in the middle of, it's not even a huge intersection. Who's going to come in here and rent a hotel room? Okay? Also, our seniors have no place to go. I mean, yes, they have a center all the way up there, right? But then you've got to make the place more accessible to our senior citizen. We cannot discourage our seniors. And we have to develop our children's future by providing them an advantage in learning, maybe a computer lab, learning technology. While kids in China learning about AI, here we are closing down a center that could help our children learn and develop themselves. So council members, you should live up to your own slogan, "A Nice Place to Live", and put in a hotel in here while we have three auto hotels. It's just like making Fountain Valley a hotel town. We don't need that. And I urge you that when you run for office, your commitment is to serve us. You guys are public servants. We are not serving you. So live up to the expectation. Each and every one of you, you should put others before yourself and not serving your own interests. Do the right thing. At the end of the day, do the right thing. Leave the legacy for your children. Do not bring shame to your children by making wrong decisions. Thank you.
Quang Tien. Quang Tien.
Hey, my name is Quang. I lived here in '97. I went to Masuda. I went to Fountain Valley High School. I came back to the city to build my own family. My wife and I, when we looked into a house to buy, one of the biggest drawing factors Fountain Valley is the great school district you guys have that drives your property value to the roof. You can ask neighboring cities. Everyone wants to live in Fountain Valley. Because why? The great school district. And tearing down the daycare that I couldn't even get in for my kid by 18 months because of the waitlist is ridiculous. I had a whole speech draft up here, but something at this meeting today piqued my interest. I've been raising my hand to ask a question. So I'm going to throw the speech away. I want to ask, is it a chicken-or-the-egg scenario? Is the Boys and Girls Club being forced out or are they being asked to leave because you want to tear down the building? And since we had the representative here from both sides, I'd like to have that answered. And I'm standing here until the end of the time.
I think at this point, you just have to make the comments. And then, once the comment is done from the public or Oma Delaborte, which is the community manager, will come up and give you the answer. But I can't give you the answer.
Okay, that's fine. And I'm still going to stand here then until I'm called.
Yeah, well, like I say, you have your three minutes to speak to all the comments that you have to make. Then, when the time is up, and because we have a lot of other public speaking, they need to speak as well. Once those questions that you have asked, we'll note it down and we'll ask all the run directors those questions.
Okay, and who will be answering those questions? Omar?
Omar or City Manager can answer that.
Okay, and how do they answer it? Would the public still hear or do everyone left?
No, we'll ask those comments now once the public comment is over.
Okay.
And we'll ask those questions that you just phrased it.
And if you guys don't answer those questions, what happens?
I won't say we won't answer it. Those comments will be addressed, and they will respond to it.
Okay, I have you guaranteed it will be addressed? Personal guaranteed?
I won't say, I don't know about guaranteed, but they will phrase what you just said and then they will go respond to it.
Okay, and what if they don't respond to it? That's the question here. Everyone here has the same question, and we have not gotten an answer that is appropriate. Your $3 million to revamp the whole building? Where's the drawing? You have three liners to explain the cost. If I submit that to my executives, don't let me out of the building. We're not kids here.
Yeah, so I'm not going to go back with you in debating to the questions. The questions you ask are legitimate questions. I will ask those questions.
Okay. How much time do I have left, sir? How much time do I have left?
15 seconds.
Okay, then, you know, make sure that you answer those questions.
Okay.
I'd like to listen to hear it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Matthew Acosta.
So, hi, my name is Matthew, and I'm 12 years old. I live across the street from here over the gated community. And I would like to strongly oppose to the idea of building, well, a hotel or like an apartment here. And so I have a couple of reasons why we should not do that. So first, we have to have like a place to like, I guess, meet or like do events and stuff. And then, second of all, the community center is a place for like my neighbors and like friends and stuff to attend classes such as dancing and martial arts. If the city sells the land, they won't have a place to learn and grow. Also, some parents send their kids to the community center because they have to work during after-school hours. So having a Boys and Girls Club here will be convenient for the students and the parents. And also, finally, the city does not need another hotel. Like, the other two hotels are vacant most of the time. And the slogan of the city is "A Nice Place to Live". Putting up a hotel in front of the gate over there or like in the center of this community will not make it a nice place to live for my family and my neighbors. So I respectfully ask the city and the council members and the city managers to keep the land and preserve these buildings for the future generations. Thank you for your time.
Mark Rafter.
Mark Rafter. Good evening, council. I'm a resident, and I'm also an investigative reporter that writes for Google News. And I've been looking at this city and some of the actions of the city for some time. I was also involved in the Bel Garden situation. To be fair to the city, anyone who wishes to contact me before I write my article, whether they're pro or con, I'd be happy to hear their comments. As a resident, I saw the presentation. I've seen slickness before. It's pretty slick. And something I've seen before by the planning commission of this city. I'm troubled by what I see. There is not enough parking as it is in this area for the residents. There's not enough parking when the library's full. There's not enough parking when we have a facility over here that has an event. How are you going to get the parking if you build apartments? Where's it going to come from? Are you going to take it away from the library? You're going to take it away? We don't even have enough parking if you want to go to the police station. I know the chief very well. Wrote me a great recommendation letter. I can barely get a parking spot there. Instead of having temporary buildings, instead of thinking about destroying buildings over here, why don't you knock down the police department and build a nice police department? So they have to be in temporary buildings. Why don't you use the city funds for something that's practical? We're a community here, and we're a very close community here. I hear from most of the people sitting back here. And there's a lot of question marks that are sitting before you guys. And I'm hopeful that you'll use some wisdom. I also want to know why I, as a resident, have to get a FOIA to get information from this city, from the city manager, from the assistant city manager, from the planning commission. Why? I'm a resident. You guys work for us. Why is that information not available? How many of you have asked for information and not been given information? Yeah. Something's wrong with that picture. You're elected. You're in charge. You work for us. Please fix that issue immediately. And some of you don't return phone calls and emails. Please answer.
Mark, your time is up. Ray Frankney.
Good evening. Thank you for the time to speak with you on this issue. I have been a resident for Fountain Valley in 1988 when I got married to my lovely wife and we moved here to Fountain Valley, lived in Los Cab for a number of years. And in 1999, we were fortunate enough to move into the house that we currently own over here beyond San Simeon Street. The things I have are really bothersome is one. About 15 years ago, there was a proposal to develop this part of the land that is currently being discussed as well as the Safeco property into an apartment slash condominium complex with limited parking for the residents of that time. Ever since then, I have yet to see any, you know, personally, other than what was mentioned earlier about for the Boys and Girls Club, what they've done. I haven't seen any maintenance, any work done on either buildings, the daycare or the community center for all this time. So I'm trying to find, what I'd like to find out is, where is the maintenance work that was scheduled to be done? Preventive maintenance will keep the costs down, but unfortunately, if nothing's been done, now you've got a $2 million bill, possibly more or less, depending on which way you look at it. Parking, again, is brought up. That's a big issue with this city. Over here, especially in street sweeping days, have you seen this parking lot on street sweeping days? It's really bad because people would rather park here than get a $65 or $69 ticket, whatever it is nowadays. And with the residents the way it is, there is no area to park if you have more than two cars. You can't park in, if you have in your garage, your driveway maybe, but outside of that, you know, where's the parking? If you have a special event over here at Veterans Park, like for the Memorial Day services or the Veterans Day services or any other over there, guess what? That parking lot is full. You have an event over at that Heritage Park, there's a lot of spaces there. And with the libraries open, there's no parking. So what I'm proposing and what I like to find out is why you're looking to sell this off, either to develop or one way or another. I think the work could have been done saving the money of the ADA requirements over the years and not to be such a high-impact proposal at this time. The thing I would like to also bring up is when this new development went in over here, there's Quimby funds that were supposed, that the City Council decided or negotiated that went straight to the city budget and not to the open space land, which is what it's dedicated with the state. So if there is a development here, where are the Quimby funds going to go? Are they going to go back into the pockets of the city budget? This is something that was never discussed before, and I'd like to find out about that, too. But again, I hope that this development doesn't go through it. I'd like to see the rooms redone and buildings upgraded because my kids had some opportunities to go there. My wife was his kid that went there when she was younger because my next-door neighbor is my mother-in-law, and I'm proud of that. And she is a long-term resident, and I've been here for over half my life, moved here from Lakewood. And I was real happy to move here, but...
Ray, your time is up.
Thank you. Have a great evening.
Jane Gianola Brown.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jane Gianola Brown. I'm a resident of the El Monterey tract, Los Alamos Park neighborhood. I'm a mother of three children, Cox PTA member, Fountain Valley Mom Group administrator, Green Valley Swim Team Meet Manager, and involved parent of Boys and Girls Club, Clubhouse Academy, and theater programs. I'm coming to you once again to express my concern regarding the demolition of the properties leased by the Boys and Girls Club, known as the Clubhouse Academy and the Learning Center. We are concerned that the sale of the building to a housing development or unnecessary fourth hotel within a mile would contribute to increased traffic on Slater and Los Alamos, an unwanted commercial activity which may affect the safety within the neighborhood. Secondly, I would like to discuss the ways the community benefits by keeping the tenancy of the currently leased the Boys and Girls Club. Number one, the Learning Center is the only non-denominational and low-cost, affordable infant and preschool childcare that serves our community. This is a known and widely shared opinion amongst the families of Fountain Valley. Number two, the Clubhouse Academy has wonderful dance, gymnastics, karate, and music programs, which are not only affordable but accessible to working parents as the Boys and Girls Club provides transportation to the facility. That being said, I am in the Boys and Girls Club, Clubhouse Academy, watching my daughter's dance classes, and I'm witnessing some of the dangerous conditions that are starting to happen to this building specifically. Roof leaking, falling tiles, wet, smelly carpet in the office, and the staff members armed only with fans and Febreeze and baking soda to mask the smell of mildew. The only reason they're looking to relocate is when staff is reaching out for help with repairs, they aren't being prioritized as tenants or being served. In fact, they're being completely ignored. In the first study session meeting, the multimillion-dollar price was listed for modernization of these buildings. Is there a more thorough itemized price breakdown for what all the repairs are suggested? Could there possibly be repair without complete and costly demolition? Please don't divert any more funds needed to fix the buildings towards costly studies. What has this study session cost the city so far? What has this study session cost the city so far? Please invest in the repairs necessary to keep not only these buildings safe, but the children and the staff members. They're an incredible asset to our community, and it would be absolutely devastating to the programs to lose these spaces. In the eventuality that the Boys and Girls Club chooses to relocate their programs, they aren't prepared to do so for a number of years. And now with this nearly $4 million price tag that doesn't include the Learning Center as the Kingston branch expansion, I have to wonder why we can't go half that price to fix what we already have.
Jane, your time is up.
Kind of hard to hear overall the applause. Good evening, Vice Mayor, City Council members. I think I've said this enough times, you all know I think very highly of you, I respect you greatly. On a human level, I adore all of you. But when I think something's wrong, I come up here, you know me, I'm a troll. They're talking about concerns about, that the city is concerned about money of a hotel over other possibilities. I was up here not long ago, a couple months ago, in a study session talking about the TOT tax. I was very much for it. I actually had to stay in a hotel a couple years ago when we remodeled. I didn't care about the TOT tax, it was not a consideration. I was told by someone up here that a big reason, or a big reason why they did not agree that the TOT, the hotel tax, should be raised. Ours is among the lowest in the county. There's no reason, it's a no-brainer, it would bring money into the city on the hotels we already have. And the discussion was given up here, and the decision was, no, let's not do this, let's not do this. One of the people here was very specific that, oh, I don't want to do this, we don't want to do this because it might drive away potential hotel developers, they won't want to come here. It's money on the hoof, it's money that can just be grabbed in, but no, we don't want to do it because it might deter other hotel developers from coming in. It gives a climate to the public of what the priority is. The traffic study done for Slater Investments for the potential development across the street was done in 2020 during the pandemic. So if you're doing a traffic study during the pandemic, it's kind of going to be doctored naturally the way you want it to go. And when you come to wasted money, I have talked about this myself, the previous, previous time in a study session, it was talked about to do a consultant to give potential new names for the crossings because people don't like the crossings. I think you're misunderstanding, it's not the name of the crossings people don't like, this is people who are upset that it happened at all. But the idea was, well, let's pay a consultant to give us new names for the crossings. And I said, you know what, that's bogus, why don't you just run a contest, have the whole public come in, submit ideas, pick a winner, give that winner $100 for their favorite charity? And that was an interesting idea, but it didn't go, so a couple months ago, the city paid a consultant to come in and give five new names, potential names, for the crossings. If anyone doesn't think I'm telling the truth, go ahead and look on the city's website, the videos on all these meetings are there. That's my history. I just think we should have a town hall on a regular basis. You know, we have the strategic planning sessions twice a year, maybe you should do a hometown meeting twice a year to let all the citizens come in and say what they're really thinking. Most people don't come to city council meetings. Thank you for letting me talk.
Good evening, everyone. I am a child of Huntington Valley Boys and Girls Club. I grew up there. I graduated from Fountain Valley High School, I've lived here my entire life. I went to Cox Elementary and Masuda Middle School as well. I graduated with a 4.2 GPA. I spoke at graduation. I think these are the kids that you want growing up in this community, right? Huntington Valley made me the person I am today. Without those dance classes, I danced there for 12 hours a week. I volunteered there, I did so much there that made me the person I am today, that has allowed me to grow and do the things I do today. These are your kids, this is your future, I am your future, this is your future, you guys. We want to be supporting this community, then we need to do something for this community. You work for the community, we should do something for the community, I think. So I'm opposed to the idea of hotels, and trust me, I want affordable housing too. I'm a college student, I'm living with my parents, I'm 20. But it's not worth putting, like, the quality of life at risk for all the citizens that live here. It is not worth it. It's not worth it for me, it's not worth it for my parents or my little brother going to school here. I want, I want kids to have the opportunity that I had. I want them to go to dance classes too, and I want them to get excited, I want them to get scholarships from Boys and Girls Club like I did. They sent me to college. These public communities are so important, especially for people like me. My parents worked their butts off to send me to the Boys and Girls Club, and through their scholarships, I was able to continue there. I hope kids like me continue going there and to keep Veterans Park because that's where I grew up and that's how I've become the person I am. Thank you.
Samuel Raymond.
Hey, guys, I'm not a public speaker at all, but I felt very important to come today. I own a flight school, 1,000 feet is not a big distance, you should be getting the notice out a little bit further than that. I might sound British, but I became a US citizen last month, I've lived here for 10 years. Fountain Valley is a wonderful place to live. But what makes it a nice place to live? You know, I'm deeply concerned about the nursery and the Boys and Girls Club vanishing. Obviously, it means a lot. This is the first time I've been to anything like this, and this, obviously, you can see is kind of eye-opening for me as well. Replacing them, and again, there's a lot of stuff that's been, I was kind of ignorant on, and I've learned a lot here today, so it might overlap a couple things, but replacing them with something non-community focused would only strip away essential services and erode the very fabric that makes this place what it is. The argument's been made several times that it's too, you know, costly to repair these buildings. You know, who was asked, how many people have been asked and companies to give these estimates? How bad are they in reality? You know, if we, is there local contractors that can be asked that actually have a vested interest that would be willing to do them at a cheaper cost or work with you guys that have kids that go there and local people? You know, the Boys and Girls Club are on a month-to-month lease. $14,000 is a lot of money. Where does that money go? And why would, I own a business, I have rental property as well. The first place I put the money is to repairs, why am I going to let my place degrade? It's an income source for me. It's bad business or it's bad management? You know, that's a lot of money, and to not keep up with those repairs is potentially intentional, but there we go. Is there money in a pot for this that should have been going to the repairs that, you know, there's just not enough to do these repairs? That's when we kind of go to the community from local businesses, people that have donations. If there's a missing half million dollars, it's not, it's not a huge amount to raise in a community like this. You know, and are we really doing all we can to find ways to do that, the grants, organizing events? They're more than just buildings, they're obviously pillars of the community, they provide critical services, obviously foster a sense of community as well. If you let them decay, you're really, it's a disservice to the children and the future of the city. Obviously, you can see a lot of people willing to work together here. You know, let's explore a lot of those avenues and just find a better way to notify the people about this. I only know because one of the residents put a notice on my door. Again, 1,000 feet or whatever, it affects people in a greater distance on that, actually let them know. It should be a priority.
Samuel, your time is up.
Thank you, City Manager and Council, good evening. I agree with nearly everything that was said here tonight, and I want to thank the community for coming out on what is really an important community issue. To state that this concept was brought up by an earlier city manager is not a plus. That probably led to the fact that no maintenance has been done. When you think you want to tear it down, you're not going to maintain it. Also, for at least three years, maybe four, this council has voluntarily turned over an additional $3 or $4 million to the State of California Retirement System to pay down the retirement fund, which was not necessary. Thank you.
I have no other requests to speak.
Okay, thank you so much. Well, first of all, I want to thank you everyone for coming out and voice your comments and feedback. We are having this presentation because we want our public and our resident to be aware that, we want to hear what you have to say. We want to, the public to be part of this process and discussion, and that's why we want having this public hearing. Just to sum up a few things that people have said, that why was there no money put into the building? Us up here as a body council, we are only, you know, as you know, the city managers and prior city managers, they're the one who brings mayor to our attention what needs to be maintenance, what needs to be updated, and we make those decisions based on that. For us as a new council, most of, everyone here is new, we haven't heard until in the last, last year that this building is in disarray. And that's why we are saying, okay, if this building is in disarray, what are the options? Let's bring the public into the pictures, and let's see what the public has to say. And that is why we're having this. Other than that, I want to thank you everyone. Does any other council member have any comments to make?
Yeah, I have some comments.
Councilmember Harper?
Thanks, yeah, first of all, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out today. It's really great to hear all of your input, and I appreciate all the great ideas I heard out there. Couple of things I'd like to, let's see, like to sort of highlight, I like the, Mr. Vu, I think, I can't read my writing, but he mentioned that maybe there's some opportunities to look at something that would provide community benefit and revenue generation, they don't have to be mutually exclusive, I thought that was a really good point. And then, you know, Quan Ken came up and said, hey, you know, daycare is really important, and that was a message I heard loud and clear, there's a lot of people that here that really make use of that daycare center. And then the last thing I mentioned, Mr. Ray, I think Ray, Ray Frankney, mentioned Quimby funds from Safeco, so I'd be interested to know, I think that's something I'd like to find out, is what's, you know, were there funds, how much were they, and have they been spent or there's still funds available? But overall, based on the, based on what I've heard today, I, and, you know, I think part of the reason that we had the study session is to get feedback from the community, it's really important, we don't, it's a very important decision, we want to make sure everybody could chime in. I appreciate the Omar and the gentleman from Cosmot from exploring the Surplus Land Act because I think that's certainly something that's worthy to discuss. But kind of hearing everything that's been said today and thinking about it, my inclination would be to look at, look at other ways to keep this as a, as a community center. And maybe, you know, maybe, maybe, maybe come up with, maybe if we could renovate the place or do something different or build, build something new there. And having said that, you know, we may go through this exercise, and at the end of the day, maybe it's not the best option, but I think it's worth spending more time to do outreach and exploring, so that's my, that's my feedback. Once again, I appreciate everybody coming here.
Thank you, Councilmember Harper. Councilmember Constance, do you have any comments to make? Thank you.
Okay, so many things to say. To the gentleman that was talking about the trailers in the parking lot, well, by the way, we are undergoing a major remodel of our police department. It was very necessary, it's a great building, and it needed work, it needed some loving care and some upgrades, and it's going really well, it's almost finished, a number of us have toured it. Our police are very important, they protect and serve us, and we needed to make these upgrades. Additionally, there's been, you know, some work done at City Hall. We're not relocating City Hall Police Department, I haven't heard that, we're good. As far as banquet rooms in the city, we do have Founder's Village Senior and Community Center, and excuse my voice, I was laughing earlier while I was drinking something and the voice is off, but we have Founder's Village Senior and Community Center, we have, there's David L. Baker Golf Course, Mile Square Park has the site on Warner to rent banquet space, there's the Recreation Center, Coastline Community College, and of course, we have Heritage Park. There's four hotels in Fountain Valley, and it's always been my understanding that they've been very, very occupied, which is what we want. The Boys and Girls Club has been on a monthly lease for the past five years, and they're certainly not in a lurch by any means. They never were, we would never do that. The city too does not get involved with daycare rates for their business, that's not our business, what they're charging people. This is a second study session we're doing on the matter, and I think it's great because I like public outreach, I know a number of you saw me in the park the other day. This too has been somewhat of a workshop, in my opinion. And how much does it cost our city? It doesn't. I mean, we do these study sessions, so we get informed so we can give important direction, you can get informed and ask questions and give ideas and comments, and I think it's great. This is actually one of the best ones we've had in a while. As far as us being public servants, we are. Me, I'm personally happy to serve, been here nearly six years, and everything I make decisions on is always the absolute best interest of the community. Just FYI, we can't do for profit, we have to just do cost recovery, and that's something to consider, so we can't do anything that's going to give the city a profit. So that's concerning. We have a sales tax increase that's going to sunset at the end of 2036. I wasn't for it, but, you know, we're dealing with it. So we've got about another 12 and a half years. I brought up previously to potentially put on the ballot the TOT sales tax increase a couple of times, it didn't go well, the people would have put it, it would have been put out on your ballots, but that's not going to happen. Our sales tax, sorry, our hotel TOT tax rate is 9%. Anaheim, for example, is 15. I don't remember any other cities off the top of my head, but that would be something that would support and sustain the city financially, and our residents wouldn't pay it. Tourists pay it, tourists come into the hotels. So that didn't go so well. Electronic billboards, we're technically losing money even though I really wasn't in favor of them. Caltrans has put a hold on those, I don't know if they're going to come or not. One was for city property by the water tank on the 405 freeway, the other was going to be on Euclid outside the Guitar Center. Slater Investments across the street, I think the final deadline, it'll be three years, early March of next year, maybe Omar can, you know, give me the deadline on that. So we have potentials for revenue for the city, and we don't yet know if they're going to come, to be perfectly honest, so there's that. And I honestly, I would like to look into potentially exploring the site for a potential hotel. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Constance, for your comments. Councilmember Cunnion, do you have any comments?
Yeah, just real quickly, thanks for everyone coming out tonight, really appreciate your feedback. I think I recorded 24 speakers, it was unanimous in the sentiment, and I get it, I live in this area too, been here over 30 years, raised five kids, and they've all gone to the schools, and it's tough when you're a parent looking for good places to raise your kids, right? I've always thought of this space, it's no secret here, I call it a sacred space, a sacred place. It's kind of the people's parcel to me, and I want to keep it. But we, you know, this is a process, we need to flush this out, and here we are. So it's no secret that, you know, I would like this to be something amazing. I mean, we spent so many years going to the Rose Center up in Westminster because that's where our girls had their dance shows. What an amazing place that is in Westminster, I love it up there, why can't we have something like that in Fountain Valley? I don't know. But here we are, and I think it's good for you to hear what I think about this issue. And it's going to take a lot more to convince me that doing anything else than keeping it is the right thing for us as a community. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Councilmember Cunnion, for your input. Once again, well, I want to thank you, Councilmember Constance, I hope that answered that question to the gentleman, did we ask the Boys and Girls Club to leave? As you heard from the council members, you know, we didn't ask. So I want to ask this question to our city attorney because there was a question by one of the audience, and the question was, why is there a FOIA request? Is it procedural-wise or is it rules? Why the public needs to have a FOIA request for anything? If you could explain to the public.
Well, I think it's more pragmatic, I mean, there has to be some method for the public to request. From my understanding, if somebody comes to the counter and asks the city clerk a simple question that he can answer over the counter, he does. But if there's a request for multiple documents or something like that, we need to have a uniform system so that everybody who comes into City Hall can be treated the same, and that's a Public Records Act request. It's in the government code, it's state law, it's very specific, and it's what we have to do. So, you know, I apologize for the inconvenience of having to fill out a form, but this is what the state tells us we have to do, and so we can take down the exact documents you want, so we can get you exactly what you want, so we can make sure to get a response to you within 10 days, and so we follow a process. So it's, it's not to create an inconvenience, it's to make sure that people are served correctly. You know, that being said, if it's simple, like I said, he'll respond right over the counter. But for most requests, we do ask that a request be submitted so that we can all take a look at it, make sure you get the documents you need.
Well, we can be happy to do that. The question is, when they don't supply information, it makes you guys appear, the city, like they're hiding. city, like you're hiding something.
Well, thank, thank you. Okay, thank you for your, your comments on that. But personally, I can share my own personal experience because I have to request a certain thing for my own personal, and as an elected official, I have to do four-year requests because they didn't give me the information I, I asked. Just, so just to let you know that we're on the same page, too. We, we don't have any special treatment on that. I've heard a couple of audience have asked, have said that they did not get notice. They were only aware by the neighbor. If I could have someone, Omar, if you would, please explain why I'm hearing two people that are saying that they did not get proper notice, when I've heard all, all the time on the, in the past that we go beyond what state requires. Can you please explain that?
Yes, sir. So as I mentioned, this is not defined as a noticeable act by the city council, study session, discussion, and so there was no notice requirement for this discussion. The city, for, for items that there are notices required, say you're going to vote on a conditional use permit or new development, state law requires 300 feet of radius around the property. The city has an enhanced notification policy, policy. It used to be 500 feet, and now it's 1,000 feet. So we go 1,000 feet out. When you doubled it from 500 feet to 1,000, that quadrupled the amount of properties, in essence, or the amount of area, quadrupled the amount of area that we covered. And so we're at 1,000 feet now, and that, again, is more than what state law requires, at 300. And again, this was not a noticeable act, but we wanted to, to encourage the type of discussion that we had here this evening.
Nothing says bare minimum, nothing says nice place to live, like, like bare minimum.
Thank, thank you.
So again, the bare minimum is zero, and we did 1,000. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much for that. Well, first of all, your voice has been heard today, and that is why we're having this. We want to hear the community, what the community has to say, what the community would like to see happen to that site.
Point is, you only know, we are only aware, most of us in this room, because we went out to 500 homes in this area, and that's why the majority of the people are in this room right now, not because of your notice.
No.
No, well, thank you, but our department director, Omar De La Boy, has explained that already. I won't go into the details. But as far as I am concerned, like I say, we are elected official, we are the balance and check for the public, and I'd like to explore the, the options. I'd like to explore some of the options, what, what are possibly other options we may have for this site? What does it take to maintain this building moving forward? And I want to thank you, Omar De La Boy, and our city managers for the great work they have done.
What is the next step, action? You heard, you.
Good. As of today, it's just a, it's not a decision, there's no vote, there's no voting. It's just a presentation to bring you aware of what we're planning to do.
Yeah, maybe, maybe the city manager, maybe if you could summarize.
Yeah. If you want to summarize it.
Are you going to answer his question about you wanting the Boys and Girls Club out? Mark.
Please, 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 no, can you be quiet in the audience? We're, we're trying to summarize for you. Thank you.
So tonight is an opportunity for our city council to provide staff with direction, what you would like us to do in regards to, do you want staff to proceed with the Surplus Land Act? So far, I've heard no from Councilmember Harper, no from Councilmember Kinnon, Councilmember Constantine said yes, not sure what vice mayor is interested in. If there's additional requests from city council in regards to us coming back to you in regards to the facility in itself and what is needed, we are more than happy to share with that. I know staff already went to the facility multiple times. I know over the last five years, there was direction to staff to have a month-to-month lease with the Boys and Girls Club for potential consideration of long-term. And part of the situation with a tenant of the building, they are responsible to make improvement to the facility, which is a standard process. And then there are some responsibility from property owner, what we need to do to enhance the facility for our tenant. And so because of the substantial costs, and if there's an interest in improving the facility, it would trigger the building requirements, and that is when ADA compliance and additional costs come in place. And during those period, I think city council was uncertain due to financial concern to invest approximately a million and now roughly potentially $2 million. We don't know the firm cost of the maintenance of the facility until we get direction from city council and then hire a consultant and fully vet everything, but so far, based, based on staff experience, we identified those line items, and that's the reason why we arrived to approximately $2 million. So if there's direction from city council on the next steps as staff, it's our job to bring back those information for city council in order for you to make an additional decision.
Well, Maggie, I would like to hear from our vice mayor, Ted Bowie. He hasn't weighed in.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say.
Okay.
So from what I'm hearing from, from, from the public today is that is why I say that we need to look into further, not developing it, but what we can use this building or this area for the public.
And that's all good, but we need actionable next steps, right? You passed out flyers in 1,000 feet, our neighbors got it. Because I don't want this to swallow them up. What actionable next step? Will we have another meeting, another standing action?
Yeah, yeah. At this point, you have to point an order. I think staff has received the directions from us already.
Yeah. Omar can go ahead and speak if there's an interest of city council diving a little bit deeper about the property.
So at the moment, we're at the status quo, so the property is remaining as is and continues to remain as is. If we get direction one way or the other, we would go down that road. Lack of any direction tonight would mean that we stay in the status quo, and the building and the use continue as is, and no decision has been made. Again, the Boys and Girls Club will be there for some time, no matter what we do. They need time. Even if they were to relocate, they would need years, not months, to go into any new facilities. And so time is on our side here. This was an opportunity to look at the property and look at the long-term and start that process early. But we are early, and so we, the, again, the, the status quo would remain in place until any further action is taken.
So Omar, so Omar, listen, there's a matter of protocol. Omar, I have a question. As far as TOT, potential TOT revenue from that property, what are we, you know, what kind of TOT tax are we talking?
You would look at probably starting first-year full operation, about a half a million dollars, and go up $700,000, $800,000 after that.
Okay. You know, I think it's really, and I know maybe this is out of line, but I think as city council members, we really need to think about our city finances, and, you know, I gave some examples about the two electronic billboards. They may not, can Omar, actually, can we get an update? Because it is relevant.
I'm sorry, but this is my question. My question is.
Put an order, please. Order, please.
So Omar, my question is about the two electronic billboards. We have a nice audience, and, you know, I personally am curious. We're talking about potential city revenue here, so that's why it's relevant.
Yeah, the status of the billboards is that Caltrans, we have, so the city approved the two billboards. Caltrans has denied the applications. They have the right within so many linear feet of their freeway for any advertisements. And so because OCTA is in the process of turning over the freeway to Caltrans, and then there's a, what's called the acceptance process, and then there's a design, three-year design review and kind of our construction review period where everything's under warranty. Caltrans, their currently stated position is that they won't look at it until that three-year period is over, and so we're looking towards the end of 2027 for that.
Ooh, okay. Again, I mean, I wasn't a fan, but I did accept that. So my other question is Slater Investments Across the Street, Silky Sullivan's. That building approval will run out next year because it will have been three years. When is that? Just so we all have a clear idea.
So their extensions for their permits expire on March 9th of 2025.
March 9th of next year. So if nothing happens, they don't start building?
The, so they don't take advantage, if there's no groundbreaking or breaking or construction that occurs by March 9th of next year, then those permits, the planning and building permits will cease to exist. They'll, they'll slide off, and then it'll be in its current state, current permits.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Omar.
Okay, I believe you have the directions. So it's a no for Councilmember Kinnon, it's a no for Councilmember Harper, it's a no for me as well, keep as it is, and we explore the other options, what we could do with, with this site, you know, moving forward for the interest of the community.
Okay. So to recap, there's no interest in moving forward with the Surplus Land Act. Staff is in the process of doing assessment on city facility. Once we complete those study, we will bring it back to city council in regards to what is need, required to rehab, if that's something's interested by city council. City council can direct us to make those improvements or set aside funds as time progresses until we have sufficient funds to update any city facility that city council is interested as part of our discussion and budget process.
That's great. Once again, I want to thank the public for being here for tonight. It's a very important topic. Okay, a closing comment for the night.
Oh, hey, Rick.